Call this meeting to order. Love to lead you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no other people than us.
The rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure a productive meeting. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning that the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment, but the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for comment from any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedure are posted in the town hall and available for everyone to review.
So, members in attendance tonight, we have Bob Jones, Mike Beecher, Jessica Van Orte, Brian Crossman, and Rich Ullit, and I am Kristin Powers. And online tonight, we have Deb, Noreen, and Nancy. Everybody in attendance here in person, I think, has all signed in. Just a friendly reminder to address any comments or questions to the Chair of the Board, who's Mike? And I think that's that. We have several additions to the agenda this evening. Within the road foreman's report, there are several items that need to be talked about, including the truck auction, the insurance claim update, and we received yesterday the Highway Safety Improvement Program grant agreement. So that needs to be talked about. Under new business, I have, per Bob's request, a discussion about the cemetery stones, and Jessica requested to discuss the potential rail trail, trailhead lease agreement. And the last item is an executive session to discuss labor relations agreements with employees pertaining to the highway department. So those are all additions. I don't see any deletions. Is anybody else have anything?
No, that's good.
No? Okay. So there are three sets of minutes that need requesting, or sorry, that need approving tonight. The first one is the regular meeting minutes from February 5th. The organizational meeting minutes from February 6th. And then, Mike, I put at your desk the town meeting, town meeting, meeting minutes on February.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I printed them out because on the back, they need signature. So, so anyway, three sets of meetings, minutes that need approval tonight.
So, how do we feel about the first set of minutes?
I'll move to approve the first set of minutes.
We could probably do, if you're happy with all of them, we could do one motion.
For all of them?
Which would make my typing more friendly.
Sounds good to us.
I will make a motion to approve all three sets of minutes.
Okay. I'll second that motion, Kristin.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
And then, Mike, you just have to yes, sign that one.
Nobody pre-requested. Any announcements? Reports. Voting Administrator Nancy, do you have anything to report tonight?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so, yes, I have a couple things to report on. We are at five permits issued so far in 2024. I contacted the A and R and also the Act 250 Commission on a possible property compliance issue, and I have not heard back from either agency yet. On the short-term rental ordinance review, it's still pending. It's sitting up at BLCT. I'm hoping to get it back in time for our bylaw review so that that can all go through the same session. And then finally, I have made the inquiry into the Department of Taxes about the option tax for cannabis sales in town. And cannabis sales actually fall under the same option tax as sales and use tax. And the town of Polat has never adopted a sales use tax, sales and use tax. There is an option to do that if we ever want to do that. It takes about six months to do it, and it would have to go to a townwide vote. There's two things that you could adopt as far as a 1% local option tax, and that is you can have it on both sales and use and meals and rooms, or have it on just sales and use, or on just meals and rooms. So again, that's something for the board to consider if they ever want to travel down that highway. It would not require a change to our charter. It would just require a townwide vote. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Nancy tonight? Yes, we're all set. Thank you very much, Nancy. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.
Planning Commission?
No, not this evening. We'll meet next Monday. Hopefully, we'll finish hammering through the bylaws at that time.
Great. Road Foreman's report.
So, Rick sent me, sorry, Rick sent me a report. The highway department has been mowing brush and have begun tree removal on several roads. Some roads have gotten some loads of gravel as they continue to deal with the freeze and the thaw that has been consistent this winter. They've also continued to stockpile gravel for summer projects. They're looking forward to grading and gravelling roads this coming week as the weather permits. There's also been ditching and road maintenance projects that are happening currently, and they are beginning to evaluate for the projects in the summer months. So, that is what's happening currently with the highway department. Additionally, the damages to the town truck, which was discussed at a prior meeting, have been reviewed by the town's insurance. And the cost to repair the truck minus the $1,000 deductible is going to be covered by the town's insurance.
Yay!
Which is great news, so they should be issuing payment to the town. I'm not sure if there's anything additional that needs to happen with that, but I've been in communication with the insurance company, so I'll follow back up with them. And the last thing, a couple other things. So, we received the Small Highway Safety Improvement Grant Agreement, which is the grant that we applied for and received for the junction of North Polat Road and Route 30. So, I would request that we go ahead and sign the grant agreement. So, the amount that we've received is $14,500 for this project with no match. So, it's, the date that it said was started was December 30th of 2023, but we just got the grant agreement yesterday. The end date is December 30th of 2024. So, the only thing that I'm sort of worried about, I got a follow-up email about it, which talked about some pretty, like, some specific requirements that we'll have to follow when it comes to tree removal and other sort of planting components of the project. So, I just want to make sure that we are going to be able to do that this summer and fall. But I would recommend that we go ahead and sign the agreement and move forward with it, and then I can follow back up. I think Rutland Regional Planning Commission is on board with helping us with the planning portion of that. So, I think that's where I'm at, that's where I'm at on that. So, how do you all feel about that?
Do we have a motion to sign that?
Yeah, I'll move that we sign this grant agreement.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Looks like this will be just you here.
Is that all you had, Justin?
Well, I have the auction and the bridge, but if you want to do those.
Yeah, so, an update on the bridge, the schedule down here for the bridge. They expect to start it around the 1st of May work, and the plan as of now is they're going to have the bridge open for the bus, both ends of the day, and then it'll be open for traffic all night. And they expect it to be closed from the time the bus crosses in the morning until around noon, and then they'll have a time between noon and 1:00 where everybody can cross, and then they'll have it closed from 1:00 till, you know, the bus has to cross again. So that's the plan as of now. And that's as they're working on the deck. They just don't want cars traveling across here, or rebar sticking up and every other issue that they're going to have with that. So that's the update on the bridge project. And the truck auction, we've got to decide what we want to do with that. That closed, the highest bidder was $15,400. I think that's between $5,000 and $10,000, too short. We do have the option to not accept that at no cost. I think that's probably what we should do. I think if we set the truck up, if we washed it, set the plow on it, put the wing on it, cleaned it up a bit, I think it would, and even had some videos of the thing operate, and I think it'd bring quite a lot more money. And there's no fee to not accept that, so. One thing that we can do is the high bidder, we do have the option to offer it to them as, you know, for what we would want. So maybe that would be an option, too. We could, we could say, hey, look, we want 25 grand for this truck. You know, it's yours for that if you want it. If you don't, then we're going to put it back up. So, that's an option, too, if that's what we want to do. I think that's not a bad idea, at least offer it to them for that number.
Right.
Yeah, that seems worth doing.
Yeah. So that's what I'll do. We'll, we'll offer it to them for 25. He can take it or leave it. And I think we spend the day getting the plow on it, getting the wing on it, getting everything working, getting it running, take some videos, and then, and then put it back up.
Everybody in favor of that? I think that's, that sounds like the right direction to go.
Yeah, if it was a thousand bucks, it probably wouldn't be worth the effort, but, I mean, that's $250,000 truck, new.
Right.
So, 15,4, just, I think we can do a better job than that.
Do you need a motion on that?
Not in the consensus of the board, because we're not spending money or anything. We're just trying to save more money, make more money.
And my last thing was, so, all of the V-Trans paperwork, so there's the certificates of compliance for town road and bridge standards, just an update on contact information for the select board, and talking about, let's see, there's the mileage certificate, and just kind of the annual paperwork. Is the board okay with just the highway liaisons and the highway department completing that and sending that back to the state?
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned. I feel like in the past, Keith filled those out.
It was always kind of handled just by the highway department, so. I've done it the last couple of years.
Yeah.
So, I'll probably do it again and just have another set of eyes look at it, so.
Okay, so is there anything else to discuss in the road crew? Martin?
Yeah, I was just wondering, how long is the bridge work projected to take?
Yeah, two to three weeks. That's what they said today. I would plan on a month, but they said two to three, two to three weeks.
My understanding was they're going to probably sandblast the steel and see if the main girders are structurally sand?
Yeah, and they're assuming, well, they're not assuming. They came out and they inspected the bridge when they, when they gave us the quote. And as far as they could see, without removing the top deck, everything looked like it was , it could be salvaged. So they're not expecting it to be completely rotted out on the top, but you never know. Once they get that top layer off, they could run into something, but they're not expecting that, from what they saw when they inspected it last year.
Now, if, if by chance it turns out that the girders are rotted and need to be replaced, that obviously is going to add to the job.
Yeah, it's going to be a totally different animal then, yeah. That's going to be a...
And these girders are not necessarily in stock anywhere?
That's correct. What would, now, I'm not Daniels, but likely what would happen is they'd put a temporary bridge across there, where we figured out what we're going to do and how we're going to come up with the money to pay for a new bridge. I believe that's how that would go. Because it would turn into a big dollar amount at that point.
With engineering costs and everything, yeah, that would start, that would start the project all over again, like they did in South Polat, in South Polat when that bridge crapped out, they brought a, they brought a temporary bridge in there and...
Let's hope that that's not the case.
Any other questions for the highway? Assessors' report? Tax and CAMA software.
So, after our last meeting, there was questions about the prices, remember? Because you got this.
Ah, yes, there were two different prices.
There were two prices, so I, there you go. And they, I had emailed Lisa, and I sent it along to everybody else, but I'll...
And that was the other set.
I think she said the cheap one.
Yeah.
She, she came back with a...
I'm just looking for the email here. So, so Lisa said that since we, so that she should have included a memo or a note to recommend the option for hosting the program on our server. Since we already have a server, and Lisa believes we're current with the hardware and software requirements...
Oh, yeah, this would be this one.
To run this on our own, that will be the cheaper option for the town. So the cost of conversion is the same at $7,500, but the annual cost with hosting the program on our server of $34.74 per year would be the option that Lisa would recommend. So, that's the story with that.
How do we feel about that?
I'm glad that the cheaper version is the one that she thinks we should do. If it needs a motion, I'll move that we approve this catalyst conversion, I guess that's what it is.
Just, just so you understand, Brian, this is, this is all the software that they do their appraisals and all that stuff, and it has to be compatible with the state, and has to be compatible with the treasurer's office and stuff like that. And the system that we're using now is pretty much obsolete, so.
So this is a one-time fee to upgrade, and then there's an annual fee.
I'll second that.
What's the, can you tell me a moment?
C-A-T-A-L-I-S.
Conversion.
Yeah, catalyst tax and CAMA, C-A-M-A. And they are going to do, oh, here's the, here's the information about what we're buying. It's this Assess Pro 5.0 that we want to buy that.
All right, so with the initial cost of $7,500 and annual cost of $34.74. All right, so the motion is to approve the catalyst tax slash CAMA conversion with the initial cost of $7,500 and the annual cost of $34.74.
That's correct.
You like that?
Sounds like it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Anything else from the assessors?
Yes. This was on my desk. The, there is a request for the select board to sign a certificate of no appeal or suit pending for the grand list, certifying that on this date, there are no appeals pending from the action of the listers nor suits to recover taxes paid under protest. Well, I'll need to sign that if you move to approve it.
Motion to approve and sign that?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve and sign the, what's this called? Certificate of No Appeal or Suit Pending.
Looks like it has slots for all of us.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And that's it from the assessors for this evening? Town birds memo?
Yep, mine's easy tonight. I see Bob's been busy with the 15 overweight permits. That was a big amount this week. Thanks, Bob. Just a note that the auditorium is going to be used by the Polat Historical Society, and I don't have the date in front of me, but it's on the calendar to your right, and that just needs to be signed. The certificate of votes I sent all of you, which is just a, by statute, after the town meeting, I just need to make sure that the Chair of the Select Board gets the certificate of votes, but I sent that to all of you. And you already did the last thing on my list, and that was to sign the annual meeting minutes. So that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
I love that you're at the beach, Deb. Behind you is the beach.
I took the day off, I went to the beach today. I wish.
I guess we're all set. We'll, everyone in favor of letting the town, Historical Society use the town hall?
Yeah.
Okay, so, any animus, sign that? All right, well, thank you very much, Deb. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Town Treasurers' report.
All right, so there are two warrants this week. Payroll is $10,531.01. Accounts payable is $63,638.25. General fund monies $36,290.45. Highway fund $23,129.58. Waste water fund monies $14,749.23. Effective July 1st, 2024, there is a new 0.44% childcare contribution payroll tax on Vermont wages. This tax is reported and paid quarterly along with Vermont withholding tax. Employers can choose to withhold up to a quarter of this from employees, which is 0.11%, or can pay the entire 0.44% themselves. Before July, we will need to make this decision. Respectfully submitted, Julie Mack. The two motions that we need tonight are for payroll warrant 24048 for $10,531.01, and accounts payable warrant 24049 for $63,638.25. And that's all.
I'll move on payroll warrant number 24048 for $10,531.01. And I'll move on payroll warrant number 24049 for $63,638.25.
Do you have a second?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
And then, also, so don't forget to sign those warrants.
Warrant.
And then, Julie left here, so for Craig Allen, it's the payment for the truck. Not sure if we'll see him in person or if Julie should mail it. Does anybody see Craig Allen at ATG Westminster?
We can talk to him.
So, he can, we can mail him the payment.
Okay.
And then, the bank said that this is a title change, and it will be needed whenever the truck gets registered with the DMV. So, who's going to be responsible for registering the truck? Do you learn? Anybody from the highway department has that coming up? Somebody within the highway department will probably take the truck out to get registered.
I don't know if, that'd be a good question for Deb, if she's handled that in the past or how that's been handled in the past. And we can easily do it out of our office, but see if she's still available to answer that.
Deb, are you here still?
Yeah, I'm here. What was the request?
How have you handled truck registrations in the past?
Good question.
Okay.
Was this for the new truck coming in?
Yes.
I think it was, I think kind of Keith used to handle that stuff, and then there were other people working that needed any kind of payment.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it hasn't happened very often over the course of the last several years that I've been there, so we can, when the time comes, we'll navigate through that, get it on the insurance, and find out how much is needed for the tax and registration, and probably could be done online even.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll cross that bridge and we come to it. Thank you, Deb.
All right, thank you. Do we want to act on this new childcare contribution payroll tax? Or do we want to think about it, talk about it, or...
Wait, what was the question? I wasn't listening.
Oh, it's this, it's this final item from Julie.
Oh, we don't have any choice.
Yeah, but we can choose if we want to withhold it from the employees.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or if we want to pay it ourselves. I mean, like, with the, with the other payroll taxes, the Medicare and the Social Security, it's half these.
Mm-hmm.
The...
Yeah, the max we can take from the employees is 0.11%, right?
Yeah, that would be a quarter of the...
Mm-hmm. I think that's reasonable.
I mean, people are used to paying half of the, the things.
Portion of their...
Portion of their benefits.
Yeah.
And it is a benefit that they'll be able to use if they need to take a leave for childcare.
Do we want to make a motion to that, and then we can have it all locked down for Julie so when this comes into effect? Make that formal motion?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make that a motion that, that we pay, or the employees pay 25% of that childcare contribution payroll tax, and we pay the other 75%, or the town does.
Okay, I'll second Rich's motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And we should probably make sure that if we get any info from the state about what this benefit is for the employees, that we get, like, a pamphlet or something so they know if they need to take the childcare leave, how much, and then we, we'll probably need to rewrite that into our employer handbook, once we get the info from the state.
Great.
Can you say that motion one more time? To have the employees pay the 0.11%?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what it is?
Yes. Which is 25% of the fee.
The tax.
Okay, so you make the motion, Rich, and Jessica, you say...
Emergency management, nothingness. Health officer?
No, nothing.
She's not here. Waste water treatment facility, the new heater's in and up and running, and he was able to reconnect a piece of the ductwork up in the ceiling, so we got to watch and see. Of course, it's getting weather now, warmer weather, too, so hopefully we, they'll...
Oh, the heat will just leak out the top.
Our propane. Yes, Frank?
In regards to that grant thing and the border between Ray's building and the question of that, is that something that you guys at the select board level want to talk about? About, there's some money that potentially...
Oh, yeah, I, I have that, talking about that, that grant is on my list.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
In process.
We'll do that in old or, or new business.
And that's basically all I have. Facilities, auditorium rental, request, follow-up?
Um, so, oh, there's the Meadowee School Board report too.
Is it what?
A Meadowee School Board.
Okay.
Report. You breezed right by that one. So... So from Julie. On March eleventh, the Meadowee School Board had their organizational meeting. They approved the dates of meetings for the year and the teacher contracts for the next school year. There was a presentation by Principal DeBanas updating them on school goals and progress. We reflected, they reflected on the annual meeting held on February twenty-eighth and offer thanks to the community for approving the budget on such volatile times. Sorry, in such volatile times. Lastly, they ratified the staff contract. The next regular board meeting will be on April eighth at the Pollock Town Hall and on Google Meet. As always, they welcome public comment during the regularly scheduled meetings. And in addition, the Meadowee School Board is requesting use of the auditorium for the following dates. All times are six-thirty for a two-hour duration. It's April eighth, June tenth, September ninth, November fourth, January sixth, and March tenth. And those last two dates go into 2025, so... That's that from the school board, so I think what you'll need to do is just approve the use of the auditorium.
Does anybody have any problem with the, the school board using the auditorium?
That's fine.
Okay, so consensus that everybody's good with, with the auditorium, so we just have to mark it down so that we know it's, it's busy those nights.
One thing I do want to bring up, Mike, and I don't know if this is an appropriate time or not, but in regards to the school, Mrs. DeBanas brings the kids over across the road down by the hydrants where the town owns that property. And they found all sorts of gifts down there that the kids shouldn't be exposed to. A lot of stuff's going on down there. So she had asked if, um, we could have the constables every once in a while just spend some time wheeling down in there when they're on patrol and see if they can let their presence be known.
Yeah.
Now, it wouldn't be such a big deal if the kids weren't down there, but, you know, they try and go over there quite often, and there's... You couldn't imagine. Well, maybe you could.
Yeah, unfortunately.
There's...
Yeah, there's too much stuff down there that the kids don't need to be seeing.
You got it, a lot of stuff.
Yeah, certainly if someone could reach out to the constables and just mention to them, ask them...
Mm-hmm.
Relay that message from Mrs. DeBanas, and that would be great. Frank?
Is that town property, their school property?
Yeah.
Is there any signage that could be used?
We could put some signs up. I'm not sure how effective that'll be, but... Maybe put some do not litter signs up.
Yeah, no littering.
Threaten to find them, maybe. Yeah, we could try a couple of different things.
It's fine, it's just fine.
Mm-hmm. I guess if we put the sign up and then the constable catches them, we can find them, right?
Yeah.
But we'll talk to constables and see what...
Yeah, I mean, when they're out on patrol, it wouldn't take but a second to, to wheel down in there and see what's going on. I can mention that to them.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Sorry, you didn't breeze by the, I breezed by the facilities report to get to the school board. But yeah, there is facilities.
Right. Anything on the facilities? Were you ever able to contact with the roofer?
No.
Not yet? Did you, did you bump him?
No.
But you want to, don't you? Bobby wants to help you out on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the request that we discussed at the last meeting, for an event to potentially be held on March twenty-third in the auditorium, so I got more information on that, so it's now... The date of the event has been changed to April twenty-seventh, but the desire is to move into the space on April twenty-fourth and move out of the space on April twenty-eighth. And it is going to be a public event with a price of ten dollars per ticket. So I think that, and it's, the event is a public talk, public speech. So at the last meeting, the board approved the use of the space on, in March. So now the event has been shifted out one month. And the way that we last left it was to just get a little bit more information about the nature of the event before the board was able to determine the cost for renting the space.
Well, if it's a private event that is charging a fee, we should definitely charge them something.
Exactly. So I'm not really sure what going rate is for anything like that nowadays.
This makes me think we should make a auditorium rental policy with like amounts or something on it. Should we charge them fifty dollars?
I feel like it's been twenty-five in the past, but... Two twenty, I'm sure.
Yeah, well, that's...
You know, I think...
That's quite a while ago, and a lot has changed since it was rented out.
I think some items to consider, or what has been considered in the past, is how much we pay to have this space cleaned. And also, you know, if there's, if it's going to be a public event, you know, are you going to have to stock the restrooms and what that costs, and, um, you know...
A public event with the, with the possibility of fifty people or something like that? Before it was, we were charging twenty-five for a yoga event that had less than ten people expected, so...
And I think considering that they want to move in a day early, that would...
Three days early.
Oh.
Or two, two days.
If they want to move in two days early, I think we are justified in charging them fifty dollars.
I would agree.
It's a total of five days, five days use of the space. April twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, yeah, five days.
Are they going, so that space won't be usable for anybody else during that time?
Well, so I need to go on, and I just received this this morning. So I need to go on and just look at the calendar and make sure that that is not...
Overlap anybody?
You know, overlapping, and I think so long as it's not, as the space isn't in use during the twenty, the date of the twenty-seventh. I think that that's kind of the priority, that if we need to be a little bit flexible on the move-in and move-out dates. It doesn't seem like it's, I don't know what the setup and breakdown will require, so... Yeah.
Harley?
Uh, is there, you assume they're going to leave it broom clean, but do you charge a, what's that called, deposit or something that you give back if it's broom clean?
We haven't, we haven't done anything like that.
Yeah, we don't have a very clear policy on it.
We haven't had a lot of, a lot of desire for it.
Usually it's the library or the school who wants to use it.
Historical Society, a few things like that. Do you know of anything too?
No, um, no, and then that's all that it's been, is people we know have been up there, so I don't know these people, so...
Right.
But, you know...
I assume there's an agreement that they sign.
Well, so this is the, the contract just states that the town agrees to furnish a clean space with accessibility to chairs and the stage lighting, and that the, the person that's, or the group that's requesting to utilize the space agrees to restore the town hall to the condition in which it's found, which is broom clean and with load out, lock up, lights off, and all trash taken from the premises. Failure to abide by these procedures
Reliable, so...
will result in the forfeiture of security or damage deposit and may incur additional fees at a rate of thirty-five dollars per hour of labor costs plus any additional cost of repair and raw materials.
We have that in there.
We've got it.
It's a nice standard boilerplate there.
Yeah. So, um, I'll, I mean, I can look further into the calendar and see what we have currently on, but... About a date.
Everybody okay with that fifty bucks?
Kristen, where is the calendar that you were referring to?
The Google Calendar.
Excuse me?
The Google Calendar?
Oh, okay.
That Sean uses?
Because I put the Historical Society's event on the calendar that's hanging on the wall to the right of the select board. It's on his contract also, the date.
Is that for historical? Yes.
Probably next month?
Yeah, it's on the twenty-sixth.
Oh, that's the day before they want to use it.
So that would be an issue with this event, but...
So they don't conflict?
Well, they conflict with this requested, like, setup date. But this requested event date is actually on the twenty-seventh, so...
Okay.
Well, I guess we just have to tell them that there is an event and they're the day before. So if their setup can happen on the day of, that's good, otherwise they might have to think of a different date.
That's right. I'll communicate that part. Do you, in the meantime, have an idea of fee, a fee for the space?
I think the fifty dollars, and then does the cleaning fee get charged to them after it is cleaned? Or we know what it's going to cost to clean that?
That might be, I don't know the cost to clean it. I think that the rental fee is, you know, covers... The intentions for the rental fee to cover the cleaning.
And then if they don't clean, we charge them extra. That's what it sounded like.
That's, that's the way I, I understand that contract. If they don't leave it as nice as they found it, then, then they got to pay extra money.
We reserve the right to charge extra.
Yeah, I would think that the fifty bucks is a good start, and if, if we can find time to kind of put, put something together.
Yeah.
Moving forward.
Okay.
That all sounds good, so...
So...
Harley?
It does sound though that they wanted several days to, to set up, and it sounds like there's another event. Is it possible they can still set up on their schedule that they were asking for? And then, uh, because it, you know, the other event actually occurs the day before, it could still take place even though they're set up.
I will ask.
That would, that would be...
What their setup is.
I don't know what they're looking to set up, but the Historical Society has out for that Friday night, so... They have to work their schedule around the Historical Society, so... If they wanted to reach out to the Historical Society and talk to them, well, that would be up to them.
So I will reach back out to this person and let them know the story about the date, or about the event the day before, but I'll also communicate that the rental fee will be fifty dollars for the event.
And...
Does that sound good?
Because Historical Society is in there Friday night, you know? And then they can set up after the Historical Society's done.
Sounds good.
Uh, that's, that's new business, right?
That was...
Those facilities.
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 Facilities, and we've managed to run all through everything else, so we're into older unfinished business, right?
That's right, of which I have...
So I sent you an email this afternoon about those appointments from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission?
Yes, which we did during the organization meetings, so I'll just fill out the form and email it.
Okay.
Right, we did that during the...
Yeah, we did.
It seemed like I was thinking about that, so...
Yeah, we appointed John Sabatka and Harley Cudney again.
Okay, so, so we're all good with that. Excellent, thank you. Anything else under older unfinished business?
Um, I have a couple updates under older unfinished business. Very briefly, on the sidewalk grant, it looks like we are able to move ahead to get another proposal. So, and I, I feel positively about this one, so hopefully in a couple of weeks, I will have another proposal to bring to the select board for the, um... This is for the engineering for the sidewalks and crosswalks, which has been a bit of a runaround, but we may be getting toward the end of the runaround. So, more to come on that. Um, the other thing is, again, just in brief, because I'll have more in the future. I had promised to ask BLCT about, um, about libraries and, um, and municipalities and how they relate. And they did send me a rather lengthy document about legal structures of towns and libraries, which I'm in the process of reading through. It does look, just, just briefly, what it's about is that there are municipal libraries and there are incorporated libraries. And clearly, what we have is a municipal library, correct, Harley? Yeah, so at some point, our library was made into a library by the voters of the town, who voted to have a library. I don't know when back in history that was, but it happened. And so because of that, the library is part of the town, and there are particular laws then about how it relates to the town. And I do think, just briefly skimming through this document, that there are a few ways we could improve and clarify the roles of the select board and the roles of the library trustees, and maybe a few slightly different policies that we could do. So I am going to be trying to reach out to a few other towns that have different kinds of structures with their libraries to see what some of the options are. And also finish reading through that document, and I hope either in two weeks or a month to have sort of a little presentation on town and library governance, I guess. So that's, that's my update on that.
Harley?
Is it possible to be sent a copy of what you're seeing from the...
Would you like it? Yeah, sure.
Yes, please. I will share it with the board.
Yeah, and I can send it around to the rest of the, of the select board too, in case anyone is interested.
People in the community.
Yeah, would like to see it also? Okay, um, I'm trying to think of how to, how to link it to it. Um, anybody in the community who would like a copy, um, send me an email at my select board email, and I will send you a copy. Send, yeah, it's, I forget the exact title, but it's something about libraries and towns. Send library. It was very helpful. I did not know about this, so good job, BLCT, to library and select.
I just have a question on that. Thank you for following that, because that was my public comment, but, um, I was wondering if, if maybe like an org chart would be something that would come out of that, where we could see who reports to whom and, and who is responsible for what. That might be helpful, so...
Honestly, that might be helpful for the town as a whole.
Right.
Because also a lot of, yeah, a lot of people don't know that the town clerk and the town treasurer, as elected officials, are not really subject to the select board, so it's... I did a select board training a couple of years ago, and it's like, select board, treasurer, clerk. Even though they are town employees in that they're paid, they are not town employees in that the select board is their boss. We are co-equal parts of government, I guess. And in a way, the library board is too, only under their own, their own sphere, which is the library. So, yeah. Good suggestion.
Jessica, do you want to do the grant now, or?
That's, I've got that, that's here in new business, after the cemetery starts.
Okay, so older unfinished...
We won't forget it, Frank.
Older unfinished business is all, all done for tonight? Okay, cemetery stones.
Okay, um, many of you probably don't know, but many years ago, I was invited to a cemetery association, West, West Pollock Cemetery Association meeting, and they elected me president, so... They've elected me president every year since, so, um, it's not a real high-paying job or anything like that, and, uh, there's a lot of volunteer work, but anyway, the, um, the reason I'm bringing it to the board is the Historical Society has approached us and would like to work together with a company to clean some of the stones. And, um, they just want the support of the board. They've cleaned some of the, they've worked with the Pollock Cemetery Association and done some cleaning on some of the old stones there that are possibly becoming illegible and, and whatnot. Uh, there's a special process they go through to make sure they don't damage the stone or, or anything, um... So Judy Coolidge and, uh, and this Historical, Historical Society in Pollock just want our blessing to, um, work on improving the, and cleaning some of the stones in the cemetery. There may be some different families that don't want their stones touched, and hopefully they'll... I mean, I don't think they're going to clean very many of them, and some of them...
Which cemetery, I'm sorry about?
At the Mountain View in, in one fifty-three. I think they're going to work in the older portion, which is up close to one fifty-three. So she just asked if I'd bring it to the board and keep the blessing.
How does everybody feel about that? They support the Historical Society working in conjunction with the Cemetery Association?
Yeah, I remember when we did that, it was a couple of years ago, I think. We did that event here at the cemetery up on the hill, and a lot of people showed up. It was a real nice community event to clean the stones together, so...
Same thing in West Pollock.
So I would say definitely the consensus of the board is unanimous, we support the, uh... support the, uh, Historical Society's efforts to get the, the old stones cleaned in the Mountain View Cemetery.
Thank you.
Good?
Yeah.
Potential rail trail head lease agreement.
So, I cannot recall if I've talked to the Select Board before about this, since I wear several hats. I know we discussed it at the Planning Commission meeting. Um, we had a couple years back gotten a Vermont Outdoor Recreation Communities grant together with the town of Rupert, which did resurface the parking lots in West Pollock and is putting up some additional, this is about the rail trail trailheads. And it, we're also putting up some additional signage, both in Rupert and in West Pollock, for where the parking is for the rail trails. We also, part of that money was for doing a feasibility study on Bruce Sir Jane's little building to see if it could potentially become a, um, like a little welcome center for the rail trail that he might run as a public-private partnership. Um, we did the money for the feasibility study, we got it, the thing back. And since it's not as feasible to move forward with, um, getting architectural drawings, we have some additional money in that grant that could be repurposed to do something at the West Pollock, um, rail-to-rail trailhead. And I've talked, we've spoken to the Planning Commission about it, we talked about it at our meeting, and I've spoken to a couple different folks from West Pollock. Um, what we would have to do in order to be able to use this money for something other than what the grant said, is make an amendment to the grant. Which I talked to the folks who gave us the grant, they'd be willing to do that as long as it was still for improving something at the trailhead. Um, folks from West Pollock have made some suggestions about things that would be nice to put somewhere near that trailhead. Um, for example, a better and updated kiosk, maybe a little more visible, like on the other side by the entrance. Um, it's been mentioned, um, a, perhaps a trash can with little doggy bags would be very helpful for people to put their doggy stuff in a, in a can. Um, also, other things that have been mentioned might be, um, a bench or picnic bench that folks could sit on who are using the trail. Um, other things that have been suggested is, um, up in Polkney, they put in a couple benches and also one of those little, um, bike fix-it things. They just goes in the ground, and people can then reinflate their bike tire, and it has a couple little benches and things that are attached. Uh, so all of those are options that this grant money could be used for. This is a no-match grant, so they just give us the money. In order to do any of those things, which seem to have support from folks from West Pollock, from what I've heard, we would need to sign what's called a, um, lease agreement for the upkeep of that trailhead with V-Trans. And I've spoken to Jackie Casino at V-Trans about it. Evidently, Polkney has signed a similar lease agreement. Now, it says lease, but we wouldn't pay anything. She sent me a copy of the one they did with Polkney, and all the parts about rent are crossed out. So what it would be, it would be an agreement that anything that we put in using this grant, like a picnic bench, we would be responsible for the upkeep of. Um, presumably, if there was a trash can, we would be responsible for putting the trash someplace that went in the trash can. I, the town already is, at some point, we're gonna have to sign a lease agreement anyway with them probably, because right now, the town plows those two lots, right? Those, the rail trail parking lots?
Yeah.
And we do that for V-Trans. I mean, it's their rail trail parking lots, it's their right of way, but we plow them. So that, if we did a lease agreement, that would be mentioned in there that we would plow those. Um, so I'm bringing this to the Select Board to see what the sense of the Select Board is, if we would be willing to, um, either to sign a lease agreement with, uh, V-Trans about the, that property, or to have Jackie Casino attend our next or an upcoming meeting to, um, to talk more to us about it and give us more info.
So, the only concern that, that I would have is putting something in there that the town crew has to maintain. I mean, we don't need anything else for those guys to maintain, so I don't know what that would look like.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how you maintain a bench.
I'm, I'm thinking garbage.
Yeah. Garbage can. The garbage can is...
Everybody's gonna be filling the garbage can.
Somebody'd have to be loving it over and it...
Well, I mean, maybe we don't do that then. But if it was a bench and like a bike rack or a bench and a little bicycle repair thing. And also, the, like, if it was an upgraded kiosk, there's not really anything we'd have to do.
Yeah, and I wasn't questioning any of those things.
Yeah.
My only concern was, you know, we don't need any, anything that those guys need to maintain.
Yeah.
They just gotta go dump the garbage every two days, and it would be ridiculous.
Mm-hmm. And the thing is, if we have a garbage can there, every Tom, Dick, and Harry's gonna be throwing their garbage bag in the thing.
Yeah, it was just, there was one person in particular from West Pollock who was saying, we need a way to have people not have their do, dog poop all over on the trail. But, you know, maybe the solution would be worse than the problem.
You can have a bag dispenser.
Uh-huh. Pack the, back the bag with them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as they didn't throw the bag out.
Right.
Well, I know, I can't, yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
Rather have the dog poop on the side of the trail than the bags.
I mean, I would hope if someone picks up a bag, they would then, you know, tie it and stick it in their car, but... I mean, bag dispenser is a possibility.
But then somebody has to maintain it. It's gonna happen once.
You brought your dog, you should have brought your bag. Rail Trail Council, the Bay State, Vermont, New York Rail Trail Council, is still finalizing its formation, and the kiosk question will be standardized, uh, across the state. So that may be V-Trans a hundred percent in another world of financing for that. And some of the other financing and major change stuff still comes probably from a balance that exists in Jim's budget that he's talking about from Rupert that covered that whole area. Anyways, the signage and things like this on the trail itself.
Yeah, whatever, whatever Jim might want to do that's an additional... Basically, the amount of money that's left in the grant is thirty thousand, okay?
But that's different, that's different.
He might want to use some of that for some more signs, but he's not gonna use thirty thousand for additional signs. I don't think we're gonna end up being able to use all that money. But it would be nice to use some of it for something... Um, oh, the other thing that I wanted to point out was that Jackie was willing to come down, um, and look at the area and talk about what spots at the trailhead that V-Trans would be interested in if we did put in a new kiosk or something.
I guess the first thing right now would be determining a, a grant agreement.
Mm-hmm.
So could we get a copy of, of that grant agreement?
Um, the, the lease agreement? I, I have one and can send it out to you.
You can send it out, then, could we view it?
Yeah, and do you think we would like to have Jackie attend the next meeting if possible to just answer any questions we might have, or do we not think that's necessary?
I, at this point, I, I don't really know that there's much questions about it. I'd just like to look that agreement over quick and, and see if, if there was any, any reason, any questions about that, then maybe, and, you know, everybody can get a chance and review it.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if there's questions, then we can ask her to, to zoom in one night or something.
Sure.
And if it's a no-match grant, I mean, I think, you know, stuff that we don't have to maintain would be great.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's like some picnic bench or something, just, you know, brighten up that area, put something nice in downtown West Pollock, you know?
The bike repair, thank you Frank. The bike repair stations are actually very cool. And benches are deceivingly expensive.
Mm-hmm.
So if you were to do a couple of those in the, in the repair and maybe some additional signage, I think you might be surprised. But I would suggest, I think the, I mean, I know I've biked up and, up and down the rail trail personally a number of times, and the bike repair stations are actually really valuable.
Yeah, I was talking to Devin from Rutland Regional Planning Commission about something else, and this came up. And he mentioned that Polkney had done something very similar. They put in some benches and a little bike, um, thing and upgraded a kiosk. And for them, that was ten thousand.
Yeah.
So, we could do something similar to what they did.
Yeah, I think that would be a big improvement.
Yeah.
And they cement everything in, I'm assuming?
Oh, yeah.
And like all the tools and everything are very...
Now, see, then the only thing...
You'd have to try real hard to...
Yeah, the only thing to keep in mind is that this grant expires at the end of 2024. So before, we would want to get any, any work that we wanted to get done, like benches put in or anything, or new kiosks would have to be done over the summer. And we would need to first sign the lease agreement with V-Trans, and then we would have to get the grant amendment done. And I have spoken to the person, um, with the Bo-Ret grant about doing a grant amendment, and she seemed like, as long as it was about amenities for the trail, which is what the grant was about in the first place, they would probably get behind it and could probably move pretty quickly. So I'm hoping that we can make a decision about this lease agreement by, at the next meeting. And then, if we do decide to move ahead with that, then I can get in touch with the grant people to make the amendment.
Sounds good. Frank?
Uh, brought up at the meeting, um, last rail meeting, is that Jim was saying, it was, it was basically, he had a bunch of money set aside, and, and the balance of that for Bruce's building was basically about thirty K. And that he had money left over in his, which would probably cover a lot of what you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
But the bigger topic is that if you don't spend that thirty K, which is a hundred percent, that's gone. And there's a need for restrooms there, which Bruce's building was going to be working on, but the engineers didn't think it was something they would want to do with Bruce's building. So Ray, who has that building next, next to the, next to the sewer plant property, which is this foundation, and there was some question as to where the line is there and things like this, and there's no lot. And the question is, is would we want to enter into some negotiation with Ray to clear up that line and everything? Because it could become a cumbersome question if he doesn't want to, if, if that foundation's on his property, if, for future plans of that, that location. So that should be figured out. And if the conscious decision is to maybe acquire that property for the trailhead, restrooms and, and a facility and a welcome center type thing, then that, that thirty thousand before the end of the year would be incorporated and to defer that cost, or we'd pay for it all. We don't know that yet, but that would be something that, then the thirty thousand, because what we're talking about is, is, isn't gonna, benches and things aren't gonna come near thirty thousand, may come out of Jim's money.
Well, we gotta determine if we're gonna enter into the grant agreement first, and that's our first. So that's farther down the trail, but thank you. Anything else under new business? Public comment? Does anyone in the audience have any public comment tonight?
Sure.
Sue?
Yeah, um, I'm just gonna, uh, it'll take me two minutes. Um, but anyway, I'm, I'm letting the Select Board know about what goes on at a library board meeting, because the Select Board is involved with the library at this point, and I think it's important. I don't know that you can answer any of these questions, but it's just some stuff I want, I want you to know. Okay?
All right.
Um, at the March twelfth Library Board meeting, um, the Library Board Chair attempted to push the rest of the board into forming a hiring committee. Um, I think to rush in, to looking for a new library director before the turmoil over the harassment complaint against him and the unjust firing of Lindsay Barnes has been resolved would be a big mistake. Later, he mentioned he was planning to have the library, um, donations used, which people donate to the library for books and programs, um, or the PPA-CIF who paid for the first attorney, Gary Kupfer. From what he said, there's a thirty-two-hundred-dollar bill for legal fees from Kupfer. When that attorney was first working for the library or the board or the Library Board Chair, um, when pressed by taxpayers at a Library Board meeting, he told us that library funds were not paying for the attorney. He said that he didn't know who was paying for the attorney, and the attorney didn't know who was paying for him either. This is some of what we've been fed at Library Board meetings. Now, the bill has come, and he wants to get bailed out for his mismanagement. He continues to demonstrate that he doesn't have the temperament, knowledge, or skills to be on a board. His knee-jerk reactions and bullying tactics continue at meetings, and, um, it'll end up costing the town more money and embarrassment. It's critical to our town budget, how, and how Pollock is perceived, to have Harley resign from the Library Board. I'm asking the Select Board not to bail him out or prop him up and to reinstate Lindsay Barnes as library director, so...
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything for the public comment section of this meeting? Okay, somebody wanna make a motion to go into executive session?
I have, I have a quick question before we do that. Um, and it relates to the library. Um, I, I saw that the library had made a motion to, um, at the, at the last Library Trustee Board there, meeting, there was a motion to refer a personnel harassment complaint to the Select Board to investigate. Do we have to make a motion about that as well? I think, I, I know that you were asking about that, Mike.
At this point, no.
We don't need to make a motion?
No.
Okay. But we have received their motion, right? I mean, we know, we know what they, what they asked us.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure if, um, I mean, there was the minutes that you saw.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if there's been any formal notification. I think, uh, perhaps the ball was dropped there.
Okay, I mean, this could be the formal notification.
If you want the Select Board, you should tell the Select Board that you...
Yeah. Do you have the wording on that motion that was made from the library?
The wording is exactly in the minutes.
Okay.
And the minutes have been posted, um, by Deb. Yes.
Okay.
And that, uh, was in response to a previous meeting with the Select Board.
Right. See, I think you said that we, we now have received their, their motion.
Marty?
Yes, can you speak to, uh, what the town's legal costs so far have, have been in regard to the harassment suit and any other matter on the library? Separate from the legal bill that the library just got for three to ten hundred dollars? What has the town incurred?
At this point, I do not know. We have been, we've had assistance from PASSIVE. That's all, that's what I, that's what I know for sure.
Can, at the next meeting, can we get some kind of accounting where the town stands on all of this? And some idea of how the town's planning to move forward?
That's, PASSIVE is, is helping us through this problem just right now.
And for those who don't know the acronym, that's our insurance company. Yeah, I mean, I know you know that, Marty, I'm just saying it for anybody else in here.
Anything else under public comment?
I'll make the motion, we go into executive session to discuss labor relations agreements with employees.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? It's, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Terried.